And with that said, I would like to thank you all again for the support of Dickinson and the Fine Arts Academy and the efforts that we've made within the past year.
Thank you very much. Counselor may I have a recommendation or comments?
Will this be adopted by our nation?
Thank you.
On favor of the attorney?
Aye.
Thank you. Good job, thank you very much. Good work. Thank you very much. Good job, thank you. Good luck, thank you very much. Good work, thank you. Congratulations, good work. Thank you very much. Good work. We will proceed to report of city offices mayor.
Appreciate this opportunity to bring you up to speed on a little bit of recent activity in the administration. This seems like a week with a lot of public activity which will be open to citizens, which is great. Regular budget meetings are of course underway. I want to take this opportunity to reiterate my thanks to the leadership of council member White and for the partnership with our own city controller, Mark Neal, as we work on getting our shared priorities into place for next year's budget. I want to remind everybody that there is a public information session scheduled tomorrow evening at the Robinson Community Learning Center. That's scheduled for 5:30 PM. Hope it will be well attended. We're also doing our next mayor's night in. Already come for that typically on the last Wednesday of the month, and this month is no exception. It's gonna be here in the lobby of the county city building and in my office. Want to remind council members that I think citizens really appreciate the opportunity to interact with council members whenever they're free to come participate in those events. The illegal dumping crew has now collected its five million pounds of trash from our city streets and counting, improving the aspects of our neighborhood, as is the ongoing effort of the Evading and Vaned Housing Task Force, which will have its next public hearing also this week. Look forward to receiving a report from that task force later on, this early fall, late summer, early fall, probably by the end of September. And I know Council Scott, the members of Task Force can keep him up to date on the day-to-day, but look forward to having the opportunity to circulate that draft report when there's an opportunity. Hope everybody was able to notice the turbine installation, which helps to demonstrate that we are on the cutting edge when it comes to energy in the city. Five hundred thousand kilowatt hours a year are gonna come out of that. It's gonna save about forty thousand dollars a year in taxpayer costs from the energy that we're gonna be able to divert to city and not have to buy from the power company. And it was built entirely with federal stimulus dollars. Since I was last up here, the LPGA, or Road to the LPGA Tour took place at Blackthorne. The attendance was seventy-five-hundred for all three days. They think that's a record for that week, and certainly a profitable event for Blackthorne. About twice as much income as was projected, about forty thousand dollars, based on the preliminary numbers, which is good news. You may see some press indicating that the animal shelter is up and running. It's not officially open. We haven't done an official brand opening. That'll be scheduled soon, but they have gone ahead and made the move to make it a soft opening. Looks like they're off to a good start there. Seeing some good activity on the jobs front, notably with this council's action on the tax debate and supporting thirty new jobs from three hundred and ninety-six retained jobs with higher rates, which I think is very good news. Our mortgage and foreclosure and pre-purchase councilors don't get a lot of attention, but I want to mention they've already assisted one hundred and thirty-four residents to date this year out of the community and economic development department, which is also very good news. I'm asking the council to help me get the word out about paper waste containers for yard waste. We think that that saves tens of thousands of dollars if we can just get citizens to stop using plastic bags and start using paper bags. They're big, they'll come up to your waist. You can get them the same place you get the plastic bags. They're relatively cheap, and when they go into the waste stream, we don't have to spend a lot of money separating that plastic from the munch. There's money to separate it, and then it also costs money to haul it, and then there are tipping fees in the tens of thousands of dollars every year to get rid of that plastic. So we're trying not to do this with any rules. We're just gonna ask people to do the right thing. I'd be very helpful if council members can help us get that word out. I'd like to brag on the fire department for a moment. They won a luminary award for their excellent work last year in evacuating portions of the downtown area that were affected by gas main leak. It's great to see that they were recognized by NSCO for that work. And also, I'd like you to stay tuned on the technology front. I know the council got some updates on this recently, the city website is coming along as we work through this and all that. And you will soon notice a change to email and calendaring that we hope will make all of our lives a little bit better as we go through the migration to Novell, who lies to the Microsoft Office program. Our IT team is really working at lightning speed for that kind of migration. We hope they have done it in a matter of weeks, and I'm very grateful to them for the hard work. We've announced the police search process that's happening over the coming weeks. I was grateful for the opportunity to introduce the police search consultant, Robert Wasserman, two members of the councils, all of the public safety committee last weekend, the board of public safety. And we've spoken as a follow-up with some ideas that were expressed at that time with Mr. Wasserman and associate Robert Stewart, about making sure that in addition to a town hall, there are other opportunities and smaller groups to engage community leaders and citizens. I know that there was concern about the security of paper recordings. There was a written response issued to that. Believe this morning, if you need any more information on that, you can follow up with our chief of staff, Mike Stone. And with that, happy to take on board any questions the council has.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Wardy. For yard waste, is it okay to use just, you know, I don't think so. No, no.
The plastic container?
Plastic, Kita, garbage container, you know, the thirty-five gallon plastic thing?
Yes, it wouldn't go into the stream.
Right, right, right.
They just empty it out.
Not bagged the grass at all?
Sure, don't have to bag it all. You can just place it there. The idea is if it is going to be bagged, please use paper and not plastic.
Great, thank you very much. Now, may I have a motion resolved on committee to hold?
Second. Any opposition?
I will remain in my seat because we all have run the order before. The meeting on the whole is not a session. Let's get portion of the conference meeting revealed of your next entry in the public hearing. At this time, I would like to ask City Mayor John Wardy to give second reading to Bill thirty-nine dash twelve.
Public hearing on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the legal description of ordinance number one oh one six five dash twelve, which identifies the boundaries of a riverfront development project area under Indiana Code seven dash three dash twenty dash sixteen.
Thank you for making the call.
The Community Economic Development Committee came to order that we know and we pulled this to the full council for favorable recommendations. I also implore Mr. Aaron Perry, the United State Department, to make sure that everyone had a copy of the map, because I know that the full presentation was already given a week ago, and it's not, I know the one is on file, so it's, you don't have, so it's a federal recommendation, or simply to give it to the federal recommendation.
The petitioner present?
Yes.
Okay, would you ask if you come to the podium, just page names, if you could hear about the recent discovery of Bill thirty-nine dash twelve?
Thank you, council. As you recall, about a month ago, we came together and voted on municipal riverfront development district. The boundaries that you are given inadvertently excluded about sixty-five parcels of land. The company we used to define the legal definitions of the boundary went by major thoroughfares, major roads, set up alleys, and by the parcel. That was discovered in our first committee meeting when we pulled together and found out that the plot of land that we had intended to be included wasn't even included right away. So we went back through, it took a little more care this time, and increased the map by about four percent by acreage. Sixty-five parcels of land are included now. Doesn't change the spirit of the ordinance at all whatsoever. It just gets it back into line with the boundaries as we intended.
Okay, thank you. Council member, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Council member Scott?
Is that my recording? Could you say your name and address?
Oh, thank you. Aaron Perry, downtown South Bend, offices at two seventeen, top management.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Counselor Roy, Mr. Perry, just the discrepancy between the Indiana Code study and their title differs from what's in the first paragraph in the state law, purpose seven ten, and I apologize if I did not catch it. Does it seven point one or change to seven, title seven?
The Indiana Code?
Seven point one. So the title should be corrected to be seven point one?
That's correct.
Need a motion for that?
Some move, second?
Some move, second. If I vote in favor of the motion, I hear you vote.
Aye.
Go for motion here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now, for the public hearing portion, appearing one person wishing to speak in favor amended version of Bill thirty-nine dash twelve. Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is now closed.
Move for passage of the amended version?
Second. You have to. Reiterate.
Yeah. No.
Sorry.
We're not, we're not. Second.
Okay, all of those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote. Go for motion here. The amended version of Bill thirty-nine dash twelve will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I now entertain a motion to widen court size.
Some move.
But the move is second. All of the favor of the motion, I hear you vote. I go for motion here.
Well, council, round session, Mr. Wardy, third reading of thirty-nine dash twelve.
Third reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the legal description of ordinance number one oh one six five dash twelve, which identifies the boundaries of a riverfront development project area under Indiana Code seven point one dash three dash twenty dash sixteen.
Will the second be amended?
No, a motion to amend the seven point.
Motion to amend the seven point.
Second. Any opposition?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No, Mr. Wardy. Dr. Wardy. Amended version thirty-nine dash twelve.
Second.
Right, Mr. Wardy. Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Fresser.
Aye.
Dr. Warren.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Mr. Phillips.
Aye.
President Deere.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion for twelve sixty-five and twelve sixty-six to be continued to September tenth?
I am in return to the side of the nation.
Let's look at that move. Right, we have motion the second, all favor. Any opposition to that? Thank you. First reading, Mr. Wardy.
Forty twelve. First reading on a bill to vacate the following described property. The first north south alley west of Noriday Avenue from Howard Street south to the first east west alley for a distance of one hundred and ninety-eight feet and a width of fourteen feet. Said alley is part of soaring second addition to the city of South Bend, Portage Township, St. Joseph County, Indiana.
Will the forty twelve be sent to five portions of property vacation? Maybe it be sent for second, third reading on ninth hand.
Second. Motion and a second, on favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, forty one twelve.
First reading on a bill to correct the legal description in ordinance one oh one forty-four dash twelve, which vacated the following described property. Several alleys, portions of alleys, and portions of Dewey Street, Burn Street, and Georgiana Street, and St. Vincent Street.
Will the forty one twelve be sent for five portions of property vacation? Maybe it be sent for second, third reading, public hearing on ninth hand.
Second. All right, favor.
Aye.
Any opposition? Now, may we read forty-two twelve, forty-three twelve, and forty-four twelve?
First reading on a bill levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty thirteen. Forty-three twelve. First reading on a bill appropriating monies for the purpose of defraying the expenses of several departments of the civil city of South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty thirteen, and ending December thirty-first, twenty thirteen, including all outstanding claims and obligations and fixing a time when the same shall take effect. Forty-four twelve. First reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating monies for the purpose of defraying the expenses of the designated enterprise funds of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty thirteen, and ending December thirty-first, twenty thirteen, including all outstanding claims and obligations and fixing a time when the same shall take effect.
The proper motion would be the Austria bill has a second reading and public hearing on September twenty-four, continued in the council portion only, with third reading set for October eighth.
Some move.
Second.
On favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you very much.
Forty-five twelve. First reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the year twenty twelve.
Will the forty-five twelve be sent for personnel finance, be sent for second, third reading, public hearing on ninth hand?
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you very much. Forty-six.
Twelve. First reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in twenty twelve of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars from general fund one oh one, one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars from law enforcement continuing education fund at number two twenty, twenty-six thousand dollars from loss recovery fund at number two twenty-seven, forty thousand dollars from human rights grants fund at number two fifty-eight, thirty thousand dollars from police block grants at number two eighty, and sixty thousand dollars from police drug enforcement fund at number two ninety-nine.
Will the forty-six twelve be sent for personnel finance, be sent for second, third reading, public hearing on ninth hand?
Second. All favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Forty-seven twelve, please. First reading on a bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in twenty twelve of four hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred dollars from waterworks depreciation fund at number six twenty-two.
Will the forty-five twelve be sent for personnel finance, be sent for second, third reading, public hearing on ninth hand?
Second.
On favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Under unfinished business, may I have a motion to send thirty-two twelve, thirty-three twelve, thirty-four twelve, and Z and eight for ninth hand? Some move.
Second.
On favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition to that? Also, under unfinished business, I neglected before we started tonight with the invocation, a young man from South Bend who was council's honor, Brett. And if he was, took a fall, he's doing much better, but if all was right, I'll have to take about ten seconds to save a short for Brett's recovery. Any other unfinished business before the council? Or any new business before the council? If it's to the floor, anybody wants to speak to us at this time about anything we did not talk about in the first twenty-five minutes of this council meeting, you may step up to the podium, we need your name and address. Council member Tim Scott will find you. You have exactly three minutes or less. And if there's something specific you would like this council to check into, we have forums that have you up here done speaking, we'll get those to put Wardy and someone to follow up.
I'll give you a thirty-second forum for you.
Chelsea Davis, thirteen thirty-three, East Calvert, South Bend. The reason I came up tonight, I got a customer who had called and questioned some work that had been performed under a city leak insurance program. And in talking to this customer, he claimed that he had purchased a property in January on Lincoln Way West, and that the city had contracted someone to come out and take care of a leak problem at his property. He was having a problem still this month, so another local contractor went out and activated by hand with a shovel this work area, and found that the job was not done, it was in fact leaking, and the stop body was supposedly replaced, which what you used to turn your water on and off had not been replaced. So I put in a public records request on August the fifteenth. At eleven AM in the morning, I hand delivered it to the mayor's office, asking for a copy of the original invoice that was submitted to the city by this contractor. And needless to say, within two hours, mysteriously enough, we had a city waterworks department person at this particular address repairing the same waterline that we paid this contractor to repair in January. And the contractor billed the city thirteen hundred and thirty-one dollars and one penny in January to do this work. I've got a copy of my request, I've got a copy of the plumber's bill to the city, and I've also got some photographs of the city employees that are time and date stamped out there last week fixing this waterline that should have been taken care of in January. I don't understand, you know, there's been contractors going off programs locally for supposedly taking advantage of programs, doing jobs that didn't need to be done, whatever the case was. And apparently, if you're connected and you know the right people, you can get away with about anything, it appears. So I would like this to be looked into and possibly look into other jobs that have been done. I see the city bring equipment out and perform duties on jobs, and the contractor turns around and builds the city for the city's equipment, and the works that the city employees are performing on these jobs, forty seconds. And I have photos and videos to prove all this. So if I can't get anything done, I'll go to the fed and to the attorney general, and we'll look into ghost employment on it.
Thank you.
My name is Reverend Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight diamond. Citizens for United for Better Government, to all local, national, clergy, civil rights, and human rights and civil organization leaders. Plan protest in September. We invite you, representative, attend to clergy meetings with the August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve, meeting at six PM at Emmanuel Church, four fifteen, Western South Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. At this meeting, we will plan a protest to march for September twenty-twelve. Many of the citizens of South Bend, particularly people of color, simply fed up with injustice, lack of transparency, dealing with the mayor's unfairness, lack of equal and fair treatment in all aspects of everyday life. There is a deep concern because of the way the city contracts are handed out and the public money is spent on pet projects directed from the political cronies. The mayor has erically and consistently refused to show good faith in matters dealing with the tapes instead of the substance he has given us, untruths and hollow gestures, further inflaming citizens. As hundreds gathered after marching three miles downtown, South Bend, he chose to go to Granger. He shows up for photo opportunities at the lemonade stand offering ice and juice, but ignores cause to meet with the family of a man who died under questionable circumstances while in police custody. He has even golfed with those who are, who should be under investigation for their death. We have no alternative except to prepare for direct actions. We must now take our case to the borders and the regionals of the national community. We believe that the protest march will underscore the above issues so that they cannot be ignored. Unfortunately, the mayor has left this city with the attorney here to come join with us and plan this march. We don't have any other option to go. We went out to view the radio room, they said we couldn't get it in. We've asked questions, had no answers. We took taxpayers' dollars, sent the tapes off to be looked at, looked into these reports, and now we're told that we won't be able to hear or see. When you talk about transparency and being open and honest, there, it shouldn't be nothing to hide. If we're following protocol and everybody's being treated fairly, like I said several times, it's not a white thing or a black thing, it's a right thing. We gotta do the thing, the concept of South Bend, putting us back together. And the only way we're gonna gather together is we gotta be able to come together. If the mayor can't talk to the city council board and the county council board and can't come and talk to us, the public, then why do we have him in office?
My name is Mario Sims, I'm the president of Citizens United for Better Government, four fifteen West LaSalle, South Bend, Indiana. As Reverend Brown said, we are planning, we'll hold our first planned meeting this Wednesday at six o'clock at our Emmanuel Church, which is our home-based plan and organization. And at that time, we intend on having national organizations support us. We've been in communication with several organizations throughout the country. We're asking them to come to South Bend to assist us in addressing what we consider injustice, unfairness, and lack of transparency. A recent example that occurred was last Monday, we assembled at the South Bend Police Station and Division Chief Orvath told us falsely that we couldn't want a radio room because that's where the tapes were at. Reality, a radio room didn't contain the tapes, they were in a desk drawer where the new director of communications. But it's that type of lack of candor, lack of credibility, that we've seen consistently, that seems to be a culture of corruption. We're troubled by it, we're gonna take a page from Dr. King, and we're gonna go to the streets with it. As our intention to continue protesting, we will increase the size, we'll increase the frequency until justice is served in South Bend. We have reached the point in communicating with people throughout the city that they're simply fed up. You've got citizens in the city of South Bend who don't know what to think, what to believe, and who to trust. It has created a situation, our police department, that most of those men and women right now are suffering from the lack of integrity and credibility at senior levels. We have a man who threatened a South Bend police officer who's still on the job. We have an interim police chief who has repeatedly stated that he will conduct an investigation on corporal stilts, instead of a person who allegedly threatened corporal stilts. Now, I'm sure there are people who don't think there's anything wrong with that. Unfortunately, that's not the majority of the citizens of South Bend. Majority of citizens of South Bend are simply outraged at these games.
Thirty seconds.
We would simply ask the council to continue doing what you're doing, to assist us in getting the tapes. We support all of you, we thank what you, thank you for what you've done. We pray for you, and we continue to pray that you guys and lady will continue to do the right thing. God bless you.
My name is Senator Brown, I'm the chairman of Citizens United for Better Government, number two twenty-two, East Navarro Street, in South Bend. And I want to have various topics talked about, if it's on my, and I want to talk about the thing that bothers me is the hiring someone or the alarming services to the front of the police. And I don't think that that is fair. We got good men in our police department. Fair enough. I get calls every day. And I think the mayor, if we work with the right people in the police department, we can come up with a gentleman. In our own police department, we don't need a outsider coming in, restructuring our police department by telling us how to do our bills. My main concern is getting a house in United back. We can have a policeman say, anytime he wears the detective vest, if we don't go to work hard, he'll go back to his police body, riding his route, and he can take his vest off if he's feeling threatened. That's bad. I don't have policemen say, anytime they feel threatened, have their vest on, just wear it inside the police station. That's something really serious to be thinking about. And we have fine officers that I know can step up to the plate, we need our police department. And I would hope that the council, and you guys don't get enough credit, maybe we come by and we complain and we holler and we scream, you guys are doing a fine job. Really. I, you know, I can't thank you enough for listening to us. But we probably have no place to go but to you guys. You are the leaders. You are the one that hounded the money. And if we didn't have you, I don't know what we'd do. So I just hope that somebody, somewhere, would try to talk to the mayor, and ask him to sit down with the highway department, the police department, try to hire somebody within our police department, and seal our police department, and let's start putting our city back together. And I hope this happens. And I hope this happens. And only can happen with you guys. Keep up the good work, I keep praying for you, and I hope you pray for us.
Hello, my name is Christine Jacobs. I live at five two nine four two Camilla Drive, South Bend, Indiana. I just want to add that I was down at the police station last week, and I heard Chief Horvath stated that the reason the public did not use the tapes or go back in the room is because they needed a secret, uh, clearance. I stated to him that I have a clearance, I've been a foster parent for fifteen years, and I have a clearance, and so I feel like everything has just been pushed off, rubbed off, you know, just, like, it don't mean nothing. I'm, I relocated here from California fifteen years ago to what I thought was a better city, quiet, uh, small city, because of so much violence back in, um, California where I live. And I would hate to see that now that I'm here, that the city council, the mayor, nobody's doing nothing about everything that's going on out here. I would like to stay here. I don't want to relocate again. So, unless you guys help, everybody that's trying to do something, you know, what use of me even being, staying here in South Bend? So, I appreciate everything that you guys are already doing, but more needs to be done.
All right, thank you.
Um, hi, my name is, um, Stephanie Jones, and I reside at forty two twenty-four Iverson Drive, um, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I've been a South Bend resident for about four years, approximately fifteen months ago. Um, my fifteen-year-old son went to school at Pitt High School, got into art and tech with another student, was called a nigger, was kicked out of school. During the time he got kicked out of school, it was over a phone. My son went to his parents' house the next day. That was the last time I seen my son. And, um, I made a police report. And my life ain't been the same since. I didn't knock at the door for the son. For the sake of God. She helped me tell me. I think that they got my son out in the car. He was only sixteen years old, his name was Jahad Vasquez. He's African-American, Mexican. Officer told me to describe my son, I described him. He said, "I'm sorry to tell you this, but your son is no longer here." They said, "It was a sixty-eight year old." I think that somebody killed my son. They said, "Ain't nobody do nothing to your son." It was a suicide. My son was found in the back of a Miller Bull and Greens Bull, just off of Craver Park, very secluded area. Who does that to a child? Sounds like electrical tower, huh? No investigation? I went before, I went before the sheriff department, I was told I couldn't see no tissues, no nothing. Ever since then, everything's been a dead end. My life's been on hold. I can't even, I can't even function every day. Now, just waking up, thinking, "Where was my son at for forty, forty, almost forty-two hours?" No investigation, no nothing.
No discussion.
No nothing. All I know is they told me, "He was no longer here." My life ain't been the same at all. One thing led to another. They told me I couldn't see my son until about six that evening, everything was taken out of my hands. I was totally distraught, my son was transferred to Haynesville, huh?
Man, I'm sure you're trying to...
And, um, no outside scene, no nothing.
Thomas Bush, seventeen seventy-eight Prairie Avenue. I would just like to follow up on what Ms. Jones just said about her son, because, uh, we did, uh, go in-depth investigation in the sheriff department, but, uh, I'm gonna try to hit the main points in each three minutes. Uh, September the fifteenth of twenty-eleven, we had a meeting with the sheriff department, uh, Chair Chris, Chris Ward, uh, couple of his captains and a lawyer, Len Coleman, uh, Reverend Jack, N W A C P, myself, and Mrs. Jones, another guy named Bill Wright. And Ms. Jones had been trying to get a meeting with the sheriff department, and, uh, they had been putting her off, so she got in contact with the N W A C P, and after a while, uh, we were able to go in. Now, you know, uh, Ms. Jones looking for some closure, you know, but the thing about the sheriff department, all they were saying, I tried to convince her, which she went in, was this was a suicide. Now, he left home on a Tuesday, then still again just Thursday, hanging off that, uh, electric tower over there. And I asked Sheriff Chris Ward, I said, "We looking at him, wondering here about, I don't know, thirty-some hours." I said, "Where was the kid?" He couldn't answer that question. I said, "Well, do you know he was threatened?" "No," this is the first time I ever heard of that. And, uh, according to Ms. Jones, um, she was coerced into having a body cremated. Uh, so I asked, uh, Sheriff Chris Ward, I said, "How can you say this was a, how did you determine that this was a suicide?" And he looked at me, and looked at his captain, his cap, and, "So, man, the decker, he say, twenty-three of us, we got over forty years of restating homicides. We know a suicide when we see one." So, I mean...
Thirty seconds.
I don't know why you need, uh, another whole department to come on a crime scene and check it out. Just call Chris Ward up and let him look at it, and he can tell you what happened.
Yeah, my name is, uh, Reverend John Kennedy, and, uh, I'm just, I'm just praying to the Lord.
Can you hear this, sir?
Uh, it's two twenty-two, no, well, yeah. Who, who asked? You did? Okay, uh, I just want to know that we just need closure on this situation, you know, investigation, and we need to ask some questions about where he was at, and what, what happened at school, and, and who was there, and, you know, we just need to ask some closure questions about what, what happened. We need to ask some kind of questions, not just, you know, sweep out of the bridge and there, you know, nobody have fault or something, but, you know, but God, he's gonna know it. He knows. God knows what happened. So, sooner or later, it's gonna come out, and that's all I got to say.
Yeah, thank you.
Senator, P O Box two seventy-four, Mississauga, Indiana. I've never heard their story before, but you can direct the sheriff's department into touch DNA analysis, because clothing would probably have some kind of, um, fibers, um, that are still standing, as well as the device. When somebody touches something, we leave behind things, um, they have that method to use. I just wanted to offer, um, that information. It seems like in Hager County, um, we have a lot of unsolved homicides going on. One in particular is the, um, unsolved homicide of Ronnie Shachelsky. I have a personal, um, crime, one was in Ronnie Shachelsky's, um, unsolved homicide, that, um, the statements have been made, um, that maybe he deserves what he got. Look at the crowd that he was signing with. Doesn't matter what crowd he ran with. He was somebody's son, he was somebody's child, he was somebody's friend. Um, you know, there's a gentleman on Ironwood, his case is still unsolved. There is DNA evidence that could actually use to clear and convict. I work on wrongful conviction appellate cases, um, that's what I specialize in. I know all about DNA. Um, it, it could be utilized. Now, I'm reading a trial transcript now, this Metro Homicide in the prosecutor's office, they only sent ten pieces of art, or articles for DNA testing in a case, that they convicted a man for fifty-five years. Ten pieces. Now, what is the likelihood that those ten pieces of evidence that they sent down to the Indiana Crime Lab was actually, they were evidence or exhibits that actually convicted him? What about the other forty? They could have probably exonerated him. But I can tell you and I'm promising you, I'm looking into it, and I'm gonna get to the bottom of it. But to the families, have the sheriff's department look into it. DNA evidence is the key to convicting and clearing the wrongful convicted and convicting the wrong.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the council this time? Sing about it. We're here.